Let's call this meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
The pledge to lead into the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Brennan.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
Here.
Councilmember Brian Erdy Alice.
Here.
Doug Shasso.
Here.
John Capers.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lynn Deal.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Present.
First item on our agenda is public comment and audience participation for items not on tonight's agenda. We have quite a few people in here. Anybody wish to speak or have something to address council? No?
There's no one in the Zoom attendance.
Okay. Next item is approval of the minutes from our April 20th, 2021 council meeting. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. A draft copy of the April 20th minutes were included in your meeting packet and are presented for your approval by resolution.
Everybody had a chance to review them. Any changes, corrections? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution to accept the minutes of the last meeting.
Second. Have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Doug Shasso. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next item is recognition of business of the month. Ms. Snyder, Engle.
Good evening. So being recognized as the business of the month recipient is an acknowledgement of a business's valuable contributions to our community. Each month, this distinction is given to a Fort Morgan business that excels in such areas as pride in their business, top-notch customer service, growth, active involvement in area organizations and programs, and community contributions that assist in creating a better quality of life. This month, I am elated to recognize Coats Realty as the May Business of the Month. This month's business of the month has been a mainstay in our community for more than 30 years, when it was founded by Lynn Coats, a former and impassioned educator and coach turned real estate expert. Upon retirement in 2012, Lynn sold the Coats Realty Agency to current owner and real estate broker Deb Elrich, who continues to help residents find their perfect home and realize their entrepreneurial dreams. Coats Realty is simultaneous with volunteerism. Owner Deb Elrich continues to give back to the community with her strong involvement with such Fort Morgan organizations as the MCC Foundation, the Fort Morgan Area Chamber of Commerce, the Sunrise Optimist Club, and the Meals on Wheels Program, where she has delivered food to some of our most isolated populations for more than 15 years. She also served on the city's Historic Preservation Board for several years. She recently invested in and constructed a beautiful new office building at 114 East Platt Avenue. Instead of simply demoing her old structure, she contacted the Fort Morgan Fire Department and let them use it for a fire rescue exercise, thus aiding our fire department with a valuable training opportunity. Deb is joined by two broker associates, Bobby Sanchez and Jay Carpenter. Both professionals were born and raised in Fort Morgan, and it is exciting that both of these individuals continue to contribute their talents to Fort Morgan, thus showing others the value of living in northeast Colorado that is rounded in family, respect for others, and support of neighbors. The people partnerships and progress are what gives every community its distinct personality. We are honored to recognize the community businesses that call Fort Morgan home and make our area a great place to live, work, and play. Please help me congratulate Coats Realty.
Thank you. We just want to thank you for this recognition. It's very humbling. We are very grateful. And I do want to just make one little announcement. This is Bobby Schontz, and her husband, Sam, actually works for the city. I just want to, I have the opportunity to thank the city for all that they did to help us when we built our office. Everyone, from Steve to Grant to all the department heads, were just so accommodating. They were so supportive. Every time we needed them, they were there. There was never a delay with anything with the city. So we just want you to know how much we appreciate that, and thank you so much. So, thank you again.
Thank you, and it really cleaned up that corner.
We think so too, and we hope it reflects well on the city as well. So, thank you.
And I know Bob was the one that built it, but you told him how to do it.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Next item on the agenda is appointment of new members to the planning commission to fill vacancies that were caused by resignations. Mr. Nation.
Good evening, mayor and council. Back before you with a couple more appointments. These are both new tonight to the planning commission. After the meeting where we seated the last two people, we had two resignations come to us, and one of them had just been on the planning commission for a short period of time, but the other one was Virginia Foley. She'd been with us for a while and had to step away, and it was kind of bittersweet to see her go. But we did have four applications come to the planning commission. What you have in front of you tonight was the two that the council or the commission recommended to fill the vacancies. They had a lot of discussion. We had four really good candidates, hands down. I think they felt that both of the two that you have in front of you in your packet, both had some business experience and thought it would be a good mix for the commission. So you have in front of you tonight Rosie Evans and Juana Layah Jr., and so we're just looking to have council okay them for the planning commission. Have to answer any questions.
I have none, anybody? Motion or resolution?
Motion is fine.
I would entertain a motion for acceptance.
I'd move that we accept as new members Roseanne Evans and Juana Layah to the planning commission.
Have a motion by Kevin Lindell, a second by Brian Erdy Alice. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for their participation. Next is a presentation on bids for IMCO three-yard sanitation containers. Mr. Evans.
Good evening. Went out to bid for three-yard containers and got four bids. EJS Supply and Coys Brothers Waste Equipment and Rolloffs USA, and we wanted to go with the three-yards from Rolloffs USA. We got them in the past, and they're a really good container.
Hey, any questions for Mr. Evans? Seeing none, I'd entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution to accept the unit bid price from Rolloffs USA Incorporated for their three-yard containers.
Second. Have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Clint Anderson. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next is a presentation on builds for a clarifier and aeration basin improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. Mr. Kaiser.
Mr. Mayor, councilpeople, may the fourth be with you.
Yes, thank you.
Keep talking to Steve.
You were very generous in our budget for the 2021, approving 1.2 million for the clarifier mechanisms to be replaced, as well as 223,000 for one aeration basin. Our engineer, Terry Kenyon, decided to put both basins in on the bid proposal, hoping that we would get approved for the next one to be approved for next year, and they would be continuing as it's going to last until next year before they get all those done. As it turned out, we had an excellent showing of contractors for this bid pre-meeting. There were six contractors that put in proposals, as you see in front of you, and all of them bid for both of the basins to be done on this bid. So we're getting really a savings on it. The bids ranged from 1,430,000 to nearly $2 million. After talking with Terry, our engineer, we decided on Velocity, they were the lowest bid. We've also worked with them several times in the last five years. They've done some awesome work for us, and we know that they're a reputable company. So we're showing a substantial savings of, you know, close to 300,000 on what was approved, and we don't have to ask for more money for the other basin for next year. And so the staff is requesting the council approve to accept the bid from Velocity Constructors for the package of both clarifiers, both aeration basins, for the treatment plant for a total amount not to exceed 1.1 million. Any questions?
Question for Mr. Kaiser? Well, that is pretty good save.
It's amazing. Terry made the comment that most contractors right now are finishing all of the pre-COVID projects, and so there's been quite a lack, and they're looking for work. Now things are opening up. They were hungry, and they hit, and they were really competitive on their bids. So we got a good deal out of the timing.
I appreciate the fact that we got to do the tour, and it kind of gave us an idea of what you were looking for.
We appreciate you all coming out. We enjoyed that. That was nice.
That was very helpful.
Thank you.
No other questions? I'd entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution to accept the bid from Velocity Constructors for a package for both clarifiers and aeration bases for the wastewater treatment plant for a total not to exceed 1.1 million dollars.
Second. Have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Brian Erdy Alice. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Wonderful. Thank you all very much.
Next time you see Terry, tell him I said hello.
I will.
Next is a presentation on the sole source expenditure for redesign of our city website. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. Last year, the Economic Development and Marketing Department budgeted $40,000 in this year's capital improvement fund for a redesign of the city's website. After the staffing changes, we kind of looked into the project and the scope of work as it had been presented, and the intent at that time was to create an economic development page with a completely different look that appeared to be a separate website, and also a sub-site for an undetermined purpose. Staff kind of discussed that and feels that those extra features are unnecessary, and we believe the goal is of freshening up and the look of the site and improving the navigation and other features can be accomplished for about half budgeted amount. We would like to request authorization up to the 40,000 that's been budgeted in the event we discover new features or capabilities that have been added since we last redesigned the site in 2016. We're also, the Civic Plus, which we've been with since 2009, also offers a program where you can pay, it's kind of like saving for fire trucks, in a sense. You pay $2,300 a year over four years, and at the end of that four years, you get another redesigned package. So that'd be, what, 2,468, $9,200, and the value is approximately, right now, is approximately $12,000. So we're suggesting that we do that. Up to council whether to approve that. And this is a sole source expenditure. We didn't go out to bids because it's kind of like software. We don't want to have to have staff learn an entirely new method of operating the website and posting and everything, and it's much more expensive to build a website from the ground up than to just, you know, kind of redesign and upgrade an existing one. So that's what we're asking for, is approval up to $40,000 for website redesign with Civic Plus.
Did they give you any estimate as to what it would cost for a redesign?
Yeah, the whole package that, I think they, I get the sense they knew how much money we had to work with, and they had given Sarah an estimate that was right around $40,000. The, what they call their ultimate redesign package is about $12,000, and then there's about another $3,000 to $5,000 in recurring maintenance costs. The rest of that was for this separate sub-site, which was intended, Civic Plus was under the impression that that was intended for a convention and visitors bureau, and I have no idea where that came from. And, you know, we can make the economic development page look somewhat different, but I don't think we need to pay, you know, $5,000 or $10,000 to have a separate look for that.
Can you tell them council got stingy and took $25,000 from you?
Yeah, it's up to you, the number.
I had a question, John. When I read through that, and $9,200, what happens if they go out of business year three? Is there any kind of guarantee or going into a NASCAR type?
I don't know exactly. I haven't, you know, you kind of get, you work with a salesperson first, and then you work with an operations person. I haven't seen the contracts. I can look at the last contract we did when we redesigned the site in 2016. I can tell you Civic Plus has been around for quite a while, and they were kind of a pioneer in this area of specialization for municipal websites. I would be really surprised if they were not in existence in three years, but I understand your concern.
I'm sorry. So you're asking for the 40,000 plus the 9,200?
No, we're asking up to 40,000, all inclusive.
Oh, minor, misunderstanding. Thank you.
Not to exceed. And honestly, I doubt we'll spend anywhere near that.
Other questions?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this strictly for economic development? Because we could do a lot with, especially now that we have CLG with our preservation.
Yeah, the intent is to redesign the entire website and add components if needed, whether that be historic preservation or what, but yeah, the intent is for the entire website.
Right, because I, I look at websites, and I always felt like we had lots more than what it showed on our website. So I'm all in favor of making it the best it can be.
One of the things we've been doing in preparation for this project is having all of the departments in the city go through and look at all their pages, open all the links, follow them where they go, and, you know, make sure that there's not obsolete information, which of course are, I mean, websites get outdated by the day. But we've really updated a lot of information and added a lot, and that's going to be part of the project. It's coming out of the economic development and marketing. Well, it's earmarked for that in the capital budget, but it's not strictly an economic development project. It's to upgrade the entire city website.
Well, that's great, because that's what people look at before they come here, companies and everything else. So it's important part.
Any other questions? I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution for improvement of sole source expenditure to Civic Plus for redesign of the city website up to $40,000.
Have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Brian Erdy Alice. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
I would request you hold their feet to the fire. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on ordinance 12, ordinance number 1249, an ordinance amending chapter 21, article 14 of the City of Fort Morgan Municipal Code concerning floodplain hazard mitigation. This is a public hearing. Please keep your comments to the issues before the city council. Each speaker is asked to limit comments time to three minutes unless the speaker represents a group of citizens, in which event additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations. I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under these guidelines or otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, or not pertinent to the issues, and to set a time on the duration of testimony if I determine it necessary in light of the number of persons who have signed up to testify. First is the legal notice. Mr. Brennan, was it properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, a legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on April 23rd.
Presentation of the ordinance. Mr. Nation.
Nothing's changed in the ordinance since we presented it at the last meeting. Once again, this is just kind of a, now that the new FEMA maps are out, we need to become in line with FEMA and what they've produced as a floodplain document, and so this just makes that set in our code. And so it's kind of a bookkeeping thing from my standpoint. Wayne will probably have questions. Everybody's doing this update right now to get it on the books by May.
Any questions? Next, we'll hear public comment. Is there anybody that wishes to address council on this issue? Enlighten us, or seeing none? Seeing none, I would ask the city clerk if he received any oral or written comments prior to this public hearing.
No, Your Honor.
Council discussion. Are there any questions or discussion by council? Seeing none, if there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion to close or continue the public hearing.
I move to close the hearing.
Second. I have a motion by Kevin Lindell, a second by Clint Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The motion carries. Council action. Ms. Williams.
Good evening, council. Oh, that's bad. On the second page of your agenda, you have your possible motion after considering all evidence submitted at the public hearing. It's the good language to either approve or deny.
I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution approving second and final reading ordinance number 1249, amending chapter 21, article 14 of the City of Fort Morgan Municipal Code considering floodplain hazard mitigation and authorization to publish by title only.
Second. Have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Clint Anderson. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing of ordinance number 1250, an ordinance amending chapter 2, article 2 of the City of Fort Morgan Municipal Code, clarifying the compensation of the mayor and council members. Once again, this is a public hearing. The same rules and regulations are the same as our previous public hearing. First is the issue of our legal notice. Is this properly noticed, Mr. Brennan?
Yes, Your Honor, a legal notice of this public hearing also appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on April 23rd.
Presentation of the ordinance. Mr. Glamire.
All right, thank you, Your Honor. Nothing has changed from the ordinance from the last meeting where we talked about this. This is to clarify and codify compensation to council members and the mayor in regards to health insurance benefits. The city in the past has had a policy that council members may elect to sign up for the same benefit, health insurance benefit the city employees might be eligible for. What this doesn't do is allow us or the city to pay any private health insurance premiums or Medicare premiums, things of that nature, but you can certainly elect to sign up for the health insurance benefits that we have through the city. So this kind of codifies that. We couldn't really find anything that indicated that in the code, so we just want to make sure we got it in the code. We've been doing this practice for quite some time. So happy to answer any questions on the matter.
Well, this is, this is our last one. This is basically just a clarification of some of the code.
Yeah.
Charter amendments that we've been going over.
Yeah, yeah, it's really the, something we've been, a practice we've been doing for quite some time, and this gets it in the code so that there's no question about what the benefit really is in the future.
I just want to state and reiterate that it's not increasing your compensation, because that would take a...
Vote of the folk people.
Yes.
I was going to bring that one up.
Just for the record, it's just clarifying the practice that already exists, like Steve said. So you're allowed to clarify things in your code. You're just not allowed to add to the compensation of your elected officials, other than the statutory process.
Okay, next is public comments. Is there anybody who wishes to address this with council? Seeing none, I would ask city clerk, if you received any oral or written comments in your office prior to this meeting?
No, Your Honor.
Comments from council? Any discussion or comments from the city council? I would entertain a motion to close or continue the public hearing.
I'd move to close the public hearing.
Have a motion by Kevin Lindell, a second by Brian Erdy Alice. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The motion carries. Council action, Ms. Williams.
Yes, council, similar to the last ordinance you passed on your second, the second page of the agenda, middle of the page has language, after you consider everything in front of you at the public hearing, your options are there to approve, deny, or continue this ordinance.
I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution approving the second final reading of ordinance number 1250, amending chapter 2, article 2 of the Fort Morgan Municipal Code, clarifying... amending chapter two, article two of the Fort Morgan Municipal Code, clarifying the compensation of mayor and council members and authorization to publish by title only.
Second.
I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell and a second by Clint Anderson. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
2022 budget calendar, discussion of employee pay adjustments. Mr. Glameyer, Ms. Kenny.
All right, thank you, Your Honor. As we start into the 2022 budget, one of the first things that I think is important to have conversation and discussion on is employee pay benefits and possible increases. Therefore, we've often waited till the very end of the budget to present these, and I think, you know, personnel in a lot of our budget accounts is 70%. And so I think it's important to discuss these first rather than wait to the end. So I've included a memo in your packet tonight. Staff is intending to budget for a 3% adjustment for all full-time employees. This adjustment would most likely be split and provided as both a base building cost of living adjustment and a base building performance-based merit increase based on performance and evaluation at the end of the year. The actual amount of the split will be determined once we know what the projected inflationary increase might be for 2022. A good metric for this that I follow is the Denver Boulder Liquid Consumer Price Index or the CPI. They, that changes monthly and I try to follow that CPI to see what things are looking like for inflationary measures. As we get closer to the end of the year, I'll know more what that split might look like. It is conceivable that the CPI increases by 3% or more over, you know, by the end of the year, that inflation may increase to such degree. It has in the past. So if that were to be the case, and let's say the Denver Boulder CPI was at 3.2%, then I would suggest that we would give a 3% cost of living adjustment and no merit-based increase, if you will. But we would not go over the 3% increase that we're talking about tonight. Most likely, it gets split between some type of cost of living adjustment and a merit-based increase, but recognize that it could all be given as a cost of living adjustment depending on the inflationary measures. Happy to have discussion on that, answer questions. Jeanie, I don't know if you want to say anything more on that?
Do you want to kind of elaborate on the merit and the...
Yeah, so the, clearly the cost of living adjustment, we'll base that on the, on the inflationary increase that we'll see. But the merit, this year, we're actually doing evaluations quarterly. So we've set those up so that all of the managers and directors are meeting with their staff each quarter with various metrics and requirements that they have to meet in order to be successful throughout the year and try to keep those employees on track. And if an employee is, is on track at the end of the year, most likely they'll see whatever that, that adjustment would be, that merit increase would be at the end of the year. They'd realize that at the first of the year when, when we, you know, turn the calendar. If somebody's not performing, then they wouldn't see that increase. They wouldn't see that adjustment. But they've had ample opportunity to, you know, right the ship, if you will, throughout the year, because as I say, we're meeting with, with employees each quarter and going over those evaluations and, and those goals and criteria that are, that are set in their, in their valuation. So there really shouldn't be any need for an employee to miss that mark, but that does happen from time to time. And we'll adjust those merit increases accordingly as, as we go through those valuations at the end of the year.
I'm going to ask a question that I'm probably going to get asked on.
No, that's fair.
You're meeting four times a year with them on a review.
Right.
They are not giving a 3% cost of living every time you meet with them.
That is correct. This would be a...
Just wanted that clarified.
Yeah. Fair, fair question. This would be a 3% increase at the beginning of next year, split between cost of living and merit. Yep. One 3% increase is what's proposed per full-time employee. Good question.
I just wanted clarification for our viewing audience.
Right.
I, I have a question. How often do you do that?
Which?
Give the 3% cost of living?
Well, we typically give some type of an adjustment at the beginning of each year. And oftentimes, they are cost of living adjustments, but sometimes they're merit-based as well. So this year, we've gotten, kind of have a hybrid depending on what the cost of living might look like for next year.
I know.
Yeah. Well, we hope it does, right? I mean, if there is inflation, that means the economy's growing, and that's not a bad thing.
Okay, bring it back to us at the end of the year.
I can sure do that.
I appreciate you bringing that up.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for you? Okay. Next is reports by officials and staff.
Well, just a couple of things for me. Clearly, we're deep in the middle of budget. We just talked about the first element of that, but we have several budget meetings coming up and you'll start to see these roll out onto future agendas. We'll be talking revenues at the next meeting, projected revenues for 2022, and then we get into the meat of the budgets with, you know, some of the utility funds. And then, you know, you know the drill, we'll, we'll have budget presentations clear into, I don't remember, I think it's July or August that we've wrapped those up. So we're, we're glad that we're doing that. It seems like we just finished this project, but I love the way we, we do budgets here in Fort Morgan and it's, it's great to be able to do these, spread them out throughout the year. So I know Jeanie and her team, they're working really hard on, on a lot of the pieces and all of the staff has been provided links to their budgets and they're starting to enter all of that data into the program that we have. And so individual meetings with me and Jeanie are, are coming and then presentations before this body, so. And then I couldn't not have an opportunity to talk about Field House. If you haven't heard, we're building a recreation field house and it opens in four weeks. Well, actually about three and a half. I consider this week pretty much over, so we're getting close, but I will tell you, as much as I love the rain, it's not helping me on this project, honestly. I have a lot of exterior elements that I'm trying to complete. We did finish paving the parking lot today. We were able to squeeze that in between storms. It paved the first lift on Friday, yeah, and the second lift today. So, but I still have a road to build, Kiowa Avenue, that gets access to that parking lot. And there's a lot of work still to be done on the road. I need curb and gutter, sidewalk, and pavement. And so hopefully, we'll get a few dry days here and we can get the road in. A lot of landscaping still needs to be installed on the outside. There's sidewalk. I think they're going to pour a big chunk of sidewalk tomorrow, which may finish all of the outside concrete, other than the curb and gutter for Kiowa Avenue. The inside is looking really good. We, we did do a punch list walkthrough with the architects and engineers on Monday morning, about four hours long, and we looked at every little imperfection. There's blue tape all over the place, things that need to be just touched up or fixed. But I think we're well on track to, to basically have the building complete by the end of this week. We are getting final inspections this week on plumbing, mechanical, electrical, building, fire, hopefully having all of that finished this week. And we're closing the armory on Friday and staff is starting to move things over next week, assuming we get final inspection and a seal, which I do think is going to happen. So I just need a little dry weather. If you can help me there, ask for a little grace with, with the rain, then I, then it can rain all it wants, once we get open. But you should have all received an invite to the grand opening event on May the 29th and certainly invite the public out on May 29th, starting at noon for an open house, to be able to walk around and check the facility out for an hour. Bring kids and grandkids, because we've got some prizes we're going to give away. A couple of 20 punch pass cards and one youth annual membership is what we're going to give away at that event, so. But you have to be present to win and you have to walk through the facility and get a little card signed by our staff in order to enter that event. So please come at noon and then at 1:00, the Masons will be there to do a cornerstone setting ceremony. And then at 2:00, we have a long list of ceremonies and a ribbon cutting event. So excited to finally have this project wrapped up. I was actually writing my speech over the last few days for that event. And, you know, we started concept, talking about this project in 2004. And we just started design in 2018 and we're finally here in 2021, going to have this thing open. So excited to do that. It's been a long time coming. I'll be glad to see it open. It's taken a lot of my time, but it'll be good to have it finished, so really exciting. And hopefully, everybody's able to attend on the 29th, so. Other than that, I didn't have anything else. Jeanie or Brent? No?
I would, Mayor, I would like to publicly thank the Morgan County Sheriff's Office and the Brush Police Department. This weekend, we had, unfortunately, we had a homicide on Sunday. And as you can probably imagine, these take a lot of resources, more resources than our patrol staff could handle. So our staff did a phenomenal job. We got a lot of people in to do it, but we couldn't do this without the help of other people. Morgan County Sheriff's Office, the District Attorney's Office, and Brush PD all sent several people to help us. And we're continuing, this investigation will continue for several weeks, I'm sure. And all, all of them are still helping us daily, so we appreciate their, their assistance and think the community should know that we have a strong partnership with our law enforcement communities as well.
Anybody else?
I think the updates that you guys did was beneficial. They kind of eliminate some of the speculation or rumor. When you guys put out updates, it kind of helped clarify what was going on. So thank you.
I loved it. That was, I liked that, too.
Thank you. And I, and I think, you know, a lot of times, we have information a little sooner than we put it out there. I hope the public understands we're doing it for several reasons. One is, we're very busy to try to take the time to put that out, take some time. But more often than not, the information we have is not beneficial to put out at that moment. So we're putting it out as quickly as we can. We want the public to be informed. Initially, it was a matter of letting you know there is still somebody on the loose, but that's all we really wanted to give at that time, because it could have hurt our investigation. So I know there's some people that made some comments that were a little frustrated, frustrated with the time it took. We handled about 94 calls that day during the same time going on. So taking all of the people that we had working to handle this and then trying to find people to come in to cover calls took us a while and, and it was a little bit, a little bit slow at times, but we appreciate the patience as well.
Ron, I got something. I want to announce that this will be my last meeting. I recently moved out of my ward and I will no longer be able to represent Ward Two for the City of Fort Morgan. I got on council, I believe, in August 2015, not knowing a whole lot about city policies and procedures. And I've learned a lot from city staff and other council members, and I'm very appreciative of my time on council. I've enjoyed it thoroughly and I want to thank my wife. You know, she puts up with me being gone most, a lot of Tuesday nights. But I look forward to it. I, six years ago, I never thought I'd be on city council and it has been a great six years. Who knows what happens in the future? Maybe one, for mayor one day, who knows? But thanks, everybody. This will be my last meeting, so good luck in the future.
We appreciate your taking the time and efforts to be a part of this council and it's been a pleasure working with you. Look forward to, you're not out of the town yet, but so. Best of luck to you.
There's going to be a vacancy in your ward at the end of this year.
Any other breaking news?
Heard we're building a, what is that place called?
The Field House?
Yeah. Breaking news.
Definitely breaking news.
Bids, meetings, and announcements, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city is accepting sealed bids for the purchase of fiberglass poles until 3:00 p.m. on May 11th for the 2021 water and sewer underground infrastructure projects until 3:00 p.m. on May 12th, or water main materials until 3:00 p.m. on May 12th, and purchase of electric and fiber optic materials until 3:00 p.m. on May 12th. Under meetings, the senior center advisory board is scheduled to meet Monday, the 10th, at 1:30 p.m. at the Gene Doty Senior Center. The library advisory board is scheduled to meet on the 17th at 4:30 p.m. in the community room. And the next city council regular meeting will be May 18th here at 6:00 p.m. Again, that one will be preceded by a tour of the Field House and Senior Center.
Next items on our agenda are two executive sessions. First one is for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators. Under CRS section 24-6-4024E, the following additional details are provided for identification purposes, economic incentives. The next executive session will be for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiation, developing strategies for negotiators, and instructing negotiators under CRS 24-6-4024E. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes, which are water purchases. I would entertain a motion to retire to executive session for the first...
So moved.
Second. I have a resolution, or a motion by Kevin Lindell, a second by Clint Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We will move to executive session.